Thank you all. Hello, I'm David Kohler. I am a secretary of planning at MassDOT. Nice to welcome you here to a public meeting. Your vision or our future? This is the eighteenth of nineteen meetings for Massachusetts State. The last one is tomorrow in Ann Arbor. Before we begin, little housekeeping. Room is out the hallway to the right. Then it was out the hallway to the left. If there should be a fire alarm, please exit, go down the stairs, make your way out of the buildings. The AED, should we need it, is down by the elevator on the first floor. The fire extinguishers are right outside this room. MassDOT employees who are CPR certified, please raise your hands, everybody knows that. Okay, so if you should need CPR for some reason, we are here. Now, I'd like to introduce people who are sitting in front of me, starting on my left. That is Frank DiPaolo. He is the administrator of the Highway Division of MassDOT. That is Tom Duggan. He is the Deputy Chief of Staff for MassDOT. This is Mark Boyle. He is the Assistant General Manager of Real Estate at the MBTA. This is Dana Levinson. He is the Chief Financial Officer of MassDOT. So, we're not going to spend a lot of time talking because we want to hear from you. But as I said, this is the eighteenth of nineteen meetings. It is a legislature has asked us, well, actually required us through legislation, to present to them a plan of what our needs are and what revenue sources could possibly be available to fund those needs. This is our chance to hear from you, our customers, about what you need from the transportation system. As we begin, I think I'd like to first call on Senator Tom McGee. Senator?
Thank you very much, David. And I want to welcome all of the Department of Transportation employees and officials that are here. Thank you for coming to Lynn. I want to thank the Secretary and all of those that helped make it a reality to get us down here to Lynn tonight. And I'll be very brief, but I think it's great to see a pretty full room here. And as we've talked about transportation in many places, the crowds continue to grow. The rooms that we have those meetings in continue to be smaller than they should be. So I think that's an important part of what we're talking about. We're facing a real challenge in transportation. And I just want to talk briefly about the challenge and then talk about the things that you probably have heard from me before, but I'm sure you'll hear from the people in this room about what we see for the future. We're facing a $1.3 billion gap in transportation funding. What we spent today and what we should be spending, it's $1.3 billion gap. So we're facing a real substantial crisis in transportation in Massachusetts. And for us to find the investment and to move forward, the transportation system that we believe we need, both in the Lynn and the North Shore and in the Commonwealth, we have to recognize that that crisis is real. And we need to work together to find a comprehensive plan to find solutions, a statewide solution, to find the resources to make transportation the system that we want. Secretary Davy likes to say it, and I think it's right. We don't have the transportation, we cannot afford the transportation system today that we have. So if we can't afford today's transportation system, what do we need to do and how do we get there? And I would just speak about a few projects and investments that we feel strongly about in this area, or at least I've been working on for many years, that I know many of you have heard about. Expansion of the Blue Line to Lynn that would create huge economic growth and opportunity, not only for Lynn but for the North Shore. We're working to hopefully get a ferry from Lynn to Boston started next year. We're with support from the Seacord Lawn Council and the Ponder Transportation. That is a piece in our opportunities for transportation. And if you talk about the challenges we face with the stretch of road from here to Suffolk Downs and beyond to the Ted Williams Tunnel, Copland Circle, which is a bogged down Route 1 and the traffic on the North Shore. Lynn, you know, just to get down to the local level, Lynn actually has three intersections that are in the top 200 of the most dangerous intersections in the Commonwealth. There's roads in Swanski that need to be replaced, roads in Model Head, Route 128, Brimble Ave. But the challenges we face on Route 128, I could go on and on. But these projects and these programs that you are going to hear about from the people here in this room tonight are projects and programs and investments that are going to make a difference for the growth of our economy in this area. We've been boxed in on the North Shore for too many years. We haven't had the investment we need to have to grow our economy, to keep us vibrant here on the North Shore. And for us to do that, we need to have a larger vision and make sure that we invest in that vision and make it happen. And hopefully with all of these hearings that we're having around the state, from Pittsfield here to Lynn and beyond, that there's a realization that for us to get the things we need, to find the resources, to provide the projects and the programs and the investments for our districts locally, we need to come together and be supportive of a statewide comprehensive plan to address the shortfall, to face the crisis, and recognize that this isn't just talk. If we want to move the Commonwealth forward, it's going to take a major investment in transportation. And it's going to take a recognition that we have to face that crisis together so that we can continue to find ways to grow our economy. And that means investing in transportation. Thank you for being here. I don't want to take too much time. There's too many people here that want to talk to you and talk about their vision. I want to thank you, everyone here, for coming here tonight. And it's not just about tonight. I hope you stay involved, talk to your neighbors, talk to your friends, talk to the business leaders in our area, and have them be part of this larger discussion. Thank you very much.
Two more items of housekeeping I forgot to mention. We do have a sign language interpreter if you need assistance. We have a Spanish language interpreter who's on the way, but I guess he's not a North Shore guy like me. He's probably having a little funny, he's waiting in City Hall. Next up is John Mulberger, who's going to speak on behalf of Mayor Judith Kennedy of Lynn.
Thank you, John Mulberger, the Office of Economic and Community Development. I have a letter from the mayor and Jim Cowdell and James Marsh, the Director of the Office of Economic and Community Development, to Secretary Davy. I'll read this into the record. Dear Secretary Davy, on behalf of the City of Lynn, we're writing to reiterate our support for the 22 transportation projects currently on the state's transportation improvement program and urge you to assist us in addressing these and other transportation issues here in the City of Lynn and beyond. As you may be aware, the City of Lynn is plagued by a lack of direct free-flowing traffic into our eight economic opportunity zones. Somewhere along each entry point, motorists must pass through residential neighborhoods or navigate limited access roads with traffic signals and numerous stops. Unlike communities that body made to thoroughfares such as Routes 9495, 128 and 1, the City of Lynn's commercial base and resulting economics are limited to what can be carried over smaller local roads. In fact, during a recent study administered by economist Dr. Barry Bluestone at Northeastern University, the lack of free-flowing vehicular transportation was identified as one of the major deal breakers when it came to attracting new business to sites in Lynn. In our attempt to remedy these issues, the city has been working tirelessly, lobbying for funds to design, engineer and implement a variety of improvements and alternatives, and in a streamlining vehicular and transitory in commuters and commerce into and out of the city's four business districts. To date, we have been successful lobbying to keep $5.3 million worth of improvements on the tip at Boyoma Square, one of the city's business districts. We completed phase two of the city's ferry terminal and have been awarded final phase money and are on target for completion of the terminal this time next year. We're working with the Army Corps of Engineers on the first phase of creating a contiguous channel in and out of Lynn Harbor that would increase commercial and recreational boating activity. The city is also studying the possibilities of additional stops in our commuter rail line and exploring ways to create access to our waterfront, which is now a prime for development. We're in the design and engineering phases of a variety of intersections, including Eastern, Western and Wait, Boston and Franklin Streets and Lynnfield Street. We're lobbying for direct access off Route 1A that would provide commuters with a southbound entrance to our ferry terminal. In the bigger picture, we are working with officials from Revere on a typical plan that would afford direct unabated access from Lynn's border to Boston by connecting Route 107 to Route 1, utilizing existing bridges at Copland Circle and parts of the road that had been placed in the 1970s. Finally, we're pushing for the extension of the Blue Line and are keeping abreast of developments in Suffolk Downs. We will insist the City of Lynn is at the negotiating table for traffic mitigation funding if and when a casino license is approved at this site. As you know, across the Commonwealth, large municipal projects such as Quincy's Marina Bay and the New Quincy Center, the Street Works Initiative, Somerville's Assembly Square in a Belt and Worcester City Square are reinvigorating the economics of older urban centers. In Lynn, we believe we have positioned ourselves on the right side of the economic curve, having recently laid the groundwork for redevelopment of both our waterfront and downtown. As the economy improves, the City of Lynn is poised to be the next Massachusetts city to undergo a similar transformation. Part of that transformation must be investment in our transportation infrastructure if we have to increase our economic competitiveness in the region and beyond. To this end, we implore you to identify the means to implement these projects and strategy in the City of Lynn, the region and Massachusetts. Thank you for coming to Lynn or your interest in these and other transportation-related issues. Should you have any questions, please don't hesitate to contact us directly. For regards, Mayor Judith Flanagan Kennedy, James Cowdell and James M. Marsh.
Thank you very much for allowing me to say. Thank you. Next, I believe the City Council is going to come down in MassDOT.
Thank you. My name is Brendan Crichton. I'm the Board Five City Council of Lynn. Joined here by Council of Board Six Pete Camato, Councilor Lodge Buzzie Bargum, Councilor Lodge Hognett, Councilor Lodge Dan Kehoe. We'll be brief. We'd first like to say thank you for doing these tours across the state to hear the people's vision of our transportation system, especially for having the hearing here in Lynn tonight. The council would like to go on record saying we are in support of transportation investment. We recognize our constituents' daily use of this, whether it be students going to school, seniors using the ride program, or commuters going to work in Boston through our road and highway system as well as through the Blue Line and the commuter rail. Additionally, we'd like to recognize the need to continue to invest in our transportation system and the economic development that it could spur in cities like Lynn, gateway cities. And again, we'll bring up the Blue Line, which I'm sure you'll hear a lot about tonight, but it really could transform the entire community and make Lynn a transportation hub for the North Shore. So we recognize, I think, that these investments do come at a cost. And I would like to say, I commend you for taking a closer look at this, but we can no longer keep the can down the road. I think this year we really need to have a serious decision made on where that revenue is going to come from. So I wish you luck in that endeavor. And again, appreciate all the work you've done on this. Thank you.
Thank you. I would like to note that State Representative Fennell just came in, but he is actually just waiting his time and going to listen in public. So next up, we'd like to hear from the former mayor of Lynn, Tom Costin, please.
First of all, Mr. Chairman and Colonel, I want to thank you for coming to the City of Lynn again and again and again to find out what our needs are here in the city. I first of all want to just let you know that I want you to realize that my intensity of what I have to say is not a just a, well, it's been involved and it's processed and so long. At the age of 21, I sat here in the City Council after 73 years of United States of the People, with Governor Trump and McGee, some of the state senators who later became the Speaker of the House and who built right down the street from us the 2000s ad arrived that used to be used for the Blue Line. And right across the street from that garage is built the university college that is now whole crowded and have the attitude. But I just want you to know that when I did come and sit down for my 30th anniversary in 1948, it was going in this building. We were building this building at the time, and I helped to build it as a member of the City Council. You were at the elementary school down the road and the mayor's office in Seattle City Council. At this meeting in 1948, I was at the end of one of the first items I read that we were going to have a visit from a lieutenant governor that was going to help to bring rapid transit into the City of Lynn. I have more hard hats and charges in my closet. I could start a construction company from the mayor's, from the governors, lieutenant governors, and members of the transportation department who've been in all the years, including the present governor who was in. We have been working on this project, the Blue Line coming into the City of Lynn, for over 100 years, 100 years. Every one of the fathers of Massachusetts has been covered by rapid transit. We have a half a spoke coming to me here and gone into the rest of the North Shore into Lynn and the state. What we wanted to do was to take another five miles of track and bring it in to the North Shore. In 1992, the Lynn Business Partnership was formed. And one of the first items that they wanted to talk about was rapid transit. They asked me to join the Business Partnership to take on the assignment of being chairman of the transportation committee. And I took it on. The first thing I did was to ask my very dear friend Ted Kennedy to send me a copy of the 1991 Transportation Act called ICE Sheet. And it only has 448 pages, and I read every page. I have a document here, what I read. Two most important things came out in transportation in that year. Two things. Number one, we wanted to go away with the small in cities. And the best way to do it, it says here in the law, is to give us mass transportation. In the year 2002, we had over 3,000 cows from our area of the North Shore going into Boston each day and coming back each day. Today, 20 years later, we have over 5,000 cows going into Boston, coming out. In the act here, it was mentioned that if we could get rapid transit into the North Shore, we could meet the standards, or their standards for Boston, by going away with the cows coming and going to Boston. I have all these papers here, I love to read. Everything I have here, I have up here. And what I have in here, in my heart and soul, because I have been working on this for so long. These books here happen to be the EPA Act of 1992, telling us that what we wanted, what we needed was rapid transit. Why? For two things. Air quality, number one, and economic development, number two. Ted Grant, the president of Lynn Business Partnership, and I would put on a panel in 1992 by the Pope. We spent three years, three years, and here's the result of our work for years. It has been, it's all over the North Shore. We had hearings all over the North Shore. And we were hoping that we would bring the results that we wanted. We still wait. I'm here tonight as a member of the Lynn Business Partnership to say that after 21 years, that I am still chairman of the transportation committee, and I am looking forward to bringing the doubt of the first Blue Line train as it comes into the Lynn station. I have two suggestions. Two suggestions for our governor, our legislature, and you gentlemen sitting before me on funding. We just read in the Boston Globe, it's passed under the editorial. An editorial saying that if we put, if we put gaming casinos in the western part of the state, we'll have to do something about mass transportation. If we put a casino at Wonderland Park, you will have, you will have a stoppage of traffic going from the North Shore into Boston. It will not be able to handle the traffic at that point in time. The best way to take care of it is rapid transit. I have a suggestion to the governor, legislature and you gentlemen on funding. The, when the, when the, the DA Act was passed, the funding was set down saying that the money that the state would receive only 15% would be set aside for mass transportation. It's not enough. I suggest that the legislature and the governor increase that amount to at least 35%. That's number one. And number two, I want the governor, the legislature and you people to start feeding outside of the box on funding. What do we do with Texas and Colorado is doing right now? In the state of Texas, they are, they are putting out mass transportation with private partners, letting private autonomous committees and work for the public to fund mass transportation. And then Colorado. The governor of Colorado, his evil-free rapid transit program is being built by private funding right now. And just today, I was talking with them out in Dallas. They are so happy because by doing it by private funding, the prices, the prices that came in for the building of the rapid transit is $1 billion under what they thought they were expected. So my suggestion, gentlemen, is that we start looking for other ways of funding rapid transit. And let's bring the mass transit back to where it was some years ago, the number one in the country. You know, I would just like to finish by saying that this 86-year-old veteran, Reed Raderen, would like to retire. But we're not going to retire after we get to the tour line in Lynn. On behalf of the Lynn Business Partnership, I'd like to have Peter Gammert, who's the owner and publisher of Lynn Hider, take it over and run you off.
Good evening, gentlemen. That's a near impossible task. And Tom will always be our Transportation Committee Chairman. As a business owner, I want to express some feelings tonight that emphasize that it's very clear to the Lynn Business Partnership and many other business organizations that the economic vitality of Lynn and surrounding cities and towns depends on rapid transportation being addressed in the near term. Continually, we have had direct acknowledgement of the appropriateness of the need for this from governors, from cabinet transportation secretaries, from economic development studies of public and private. But likely for myriad of reasons, we can't seem to push back past the phase of early environmental study reports. We have economic development in action going on right now in this city that deserves a lot of recognition. We have it in the forms of transformation of our waterfront, interest in expanding educational platforms from North Shore Community College and Salem State University and others, a revitalization of neighborhoods adjacent to these, new loft housing opportunities, a revitalized museum and history center, separate buildings housing art programs for adults and kids, and even downstairs in the building that we're meeting tonight, a refurbished, very active and very enjoyable performing arts venue in the auditorium. All these and more generate economic vitality and economic development. To be more pragmatic would be to solicit your help in addressing the North Shore's commuter services. Lynn has long had a commuter rail stop. Its service is woefully intermittent at non-rush hours. Next to it is a T-garage already built with a T-bus stop outside its front door and across the Lynnway pedestrian footbridge, anticipating ferry service to Boston in predominantly protected waterways. But gentlemen, there's a most important cog missing to bring all of these efforts alive. And that is your considerations for extending the rapid transit system to support this community and all of the above. The recent increase in rapid transit ridership system-wide should encourage your deliberations. The link to Logan Airport for business commuters and travelers from as far away as Newburyport and many other communities in between should encourage your deliberations. The 6,000 workers from the North Shore with jobs at Logan and the prospect of further economic development activity in this immediate region as a result of a casino in Suffolk Downs and its job potentials should encourage your deliberations. All these encouraging attributes point to an extremely favorable success rate for the future of the T and for the future of our communities by extending the shortest spoke in the rapid transit system we all to Lynn. Thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you, Boyd. One second, I'd like to ask Mayor Blue Scanlon, will that be able to come down?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. I'm sure that everyone in the room realizes that our transportation systems have been deteriorating. What some may not realize is that they don't deteriorate in a linear fashion. If we don't fix them on time, the cost goes up much, much more rapidly, perhaps geometrically. Therefore, we need a significant dedicated revenue stream that we don't have today. I don't want to be fighting about whether Beverly gets it, or Lynn gets it, or Sogas gets it. There has to be a pot of money of size which, over a period of years, will bring our transportation system into a decent state, which it is not in today. And it's going to be painful. But everybody in the room and everybody in the state has to understand that the longer we wait to fix this problem, the worse the problem is going to get, meaning the more expensive it will be to fix it. And it will become impossible at some point to fix. I'd like to offer my services any one of your 19 places. If you go back to make the point, I'm old enough to not care too much. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I would like to note that we've been joined by Chris Mulberger. He is the Administrator at the Aeronautics Commission of MassDOT. We had a board meeting today, and so it's finally over. And some of our more illustrious members are trickling in. Next up is Mayor Dan Verso, over here. Mayor Verso, please.
Thank you very much. Before I begin, I'd first like to thank Senator McGee for arranging this additional public meeting. It gives all of us residents and leaders from the north of Boston yet another opportunity to call to attention to many important transportation needs that we all share and is somewhat unique to our individual areas. As the state focuses on a comprehensive transportation strategy, As the state focuses on a comprehensive transportation strategy, it's critical that we think as a region and focus on major transportation projects that will have the greatest benefit, the greatest impact to all communities. We should support some of the smaller projects that are in our individual communities because I do believe that the small projects will have benefit in the surrounding communities and we should support one another. This evening, for the purposes of this meeting, I'd like to focus my remarks on what I believe and what I believe most leaders of the immediately neighboring communities feel is the biggest impediment to economic growth in the corridor, the stretch in between the Chelsea-Revere line to Route 95 and Pevil. At my request, CDM, the design firm of record for DOT, has prepared a handout that I believe is possibly being distributed now or can be distributed, you can certainly be found on our website at revere.org, for people to look at, that talks about the Route 1 Improvement Project and the steps it takes to complete full project design and the start of project construction. I don't think there's anybody in this room who hasn't experienced the major delays going both north and south each and every day, in the morning and in the afternoon, for three hours at a time, going Route 1 South and then once again Route 1 North. These horrific traffic jams are there every day, five days a week. It is not getting any better. In fact, my observation shows that it's getting significantly worse, particularly as IC cars backing up from Copland Circle, sometimes now as far back as just coming off the Tobin The problems caused by Route 1 is not the only thing that impacts us, at least in Revere. We've got airport traffic that intersects with commuter traffic in the mornings and afternoons. And it, it, it's creating a problem not just for us in Revere, but our neighbors here in Lynn, our neighbors in Chelsea, and obviously our neighbors as we go up to the North Shore of Beverly and Salem, for example. Thanks to the efforts of Representative Reinstein and with the support of Senator McGee and state, we have, we have now a state transportation bond that contains $10 million dollars as an authorization for this Route 1 Improvement Project. While that is a very important step, it is only a first step. We now need the cooperation of the governor, the legislature and Mass DOT to totally and finally implement this long-delayed, badly needed project. The project has great significance, as I say, for all of our communities, from Chelsea to the New Hampshire Board. As a region, I also think that we should not only look at this very important Route 1 project, but there's a second piece to this, and that is traffic that is coming from Route 1A heading north should have the opportunity to enter Route 16 and up onto Route 1 just before getting into Chelsea as another source of entry to Route 1. That, I believe, is going to ease the burden on 1A, it's going to ease the burden on certainly at Mahoney Circle and all the way down Squire Road to Copland Circle. So there are many, many projects I'm sure that you're going to have the opportunity to look at and, and a lot of decisions to make, but from our standpoint, without Route 1 being addressed, we're, we're just going to continue to magnify and continue, you know, these problems and really stump any economic growth that that region could otherwise experience. So I would ask for your consideration to, to continue to look at that project. It's going to have major, major impacts for, as I say, for all of our communities, really from Chelsea all the way up to the Gavsham. And I really, once again, want to thank Senator McGee and thank all of you for being here this evening to listen to these very important problems. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to note that Secretary Richard Davy, Mass dot's secretary, has now been able to join us in the room. Now, our final official tonight is Mayor Kimberly Driscoll of Salem.
Thank you. I appreciate the opportunity to have us all come together to share some thoughts and perhaps shed some tears about the state of public transportation system in Massachusetts. I don't think anyone in this room would disagree that there's an undeniable synergy between public transportation investments and urban revitalization. The examples are too numerous to mention, not only throughout our country but across the globe. Closer to home in Salem, we've seen terrific upsides from our commuter rail service, one of the busiest in the T system with 31 trains and 16 buses on a daily basis. We're very much looking forward to further station upgrades. The new garage, the new lobby, amenities like that are slated to start next spring. In addition, our six-year-old ferry service has been an integral part of our tourism business and a boon to our commuters, carrying tens of thousands of passengers each year from May to November. There's no doubt that the investments we make in transportation from public transit, roadway upgrades and water transportation will help support housing growth, economic activity, environmental health and walkability within our cities. It really is, in my belief, the key to the long-term revitalization of the Commonwealth's 24 gateway cities. Every city and town in this region across the Commonwealth has a long list of transportation projects that follow the one of these categories that would provide substantial economic, environmental and quality of life benefits, but funding, both capital and operational, always seems to be the challenge. It's kind of like knowing the recipe but not being able to pour the ingredients. Clearly, the time is now to implement solutions that will enable us to realize a statewide plan to invest in transportation, including public transit, like the MTA and the other regional transit authorities that exist in other parts of the state, roadway upgrades, which are often linked with both economic gains and reduction in congestion, and water transportation, really a wide open field in the Commonwealth. We have not taken full advantage of water transportation. I like to say there are no car holes in the harbor repair. It's a nice way to travel in and around and we are a coastal community and many of us obviously can take advantage of that. There have been studies, reforms, discussions and cutbacks in the past. We certainly can't afford another sort of budget showdown in May. The time now is for action and we have leadership in public transportation with Secretary Davy and his team, many of whom are here, Governor Patrick and legislative leaders like Senate Transportation Chair Tom McGee. We should certainly have capable folks to lead this effort. Local leaders are ready, willing and able to stand with you and support you in your efforts to find solutions. The continued revitalization of our communities and the quality of life of our residents is truly what is at stake. And I and many others want to work with you to find a solution that's not only sustainable but that's bold and that will allow us to have this conversation once and plan for our future for many, many generations to come. And again, thank you for the opportunity to share your thoughts and please call on us. We're ready to stand with you to help in this solution. It's not going to be easy, but I think it's very worthwhile, the effort. Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.